All the order of meeting with the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, June 17th at 7:00 P. M. You would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and after the prayer, please remain standing when we lead in prayer this evening by Pastor Cleon Wright from the Mount Carmel Christian Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty and merciful and gracious heavenly Father, Creator of the universe, the world and all of us that live therein, we would ask that you would grant us wisdom for the decisions that are to be made this evening and that you would help us to adapt an attitude that we would desire to only make decisions according to your will, that you would be willing to honor, to approve and to bless, that all may be done to your glory. Amen.
Thank you. May be seated. Just a reminder to the council, please turn on the microphones. Roll call.
Here.
Here.
Gibson. Here.
Hill.
Here.
Sheen. Popper.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Manship. Here.
Moon.
Here.
William. S.
All right, we do have a quorum. Obviously should receive copies of the minutes for our regular meeting of June 3rd. Do you have a motion? Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Susan and Miss Metron. You get that right?
Yep.
Any additions, delegations or corrections? You're going to end the roll call with minutes.
Metron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Popper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Emma.
Aye. This is your approval of a vote of eight to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
None, sir.
Controller.
Good evening. So, the last couple of months, the city staff have been working with Baker-Tilly on a product that is new to the Indiana marketplace called a resiliency report. We've got a couple of individuals here from Baker-Tilly. Susan Reed and Rachel Westervelt are going to give us a presentation on the report itself, which I have provided you with a hard copy as well. Susan Reed.
Welcome.
Thank you. Great for you fans, guys. I can do that. Okay, great. Well, thank you for the opportunity to talk with you today. Baker-Tilly has had the pleasure of working with city leaders to develop a resiliency report for the city. We developed the 42-page report that we are going to provide a high-level overview of the contents of that report tonight and its purpose, how it was developed and what it contains. Investors and community stakeholders, particularly the business community, have developed an interest around a government's resiliency. We have found that the report has many uses and should be a great resource to share with corporations and businesses, helpful with applying for grants, particularly if it dovetails to the things that are outlined within the report. And it's also helpful to share with community members and to assist with really attracting people and employees to the city. Greenwood is the first city for which Baker-Tilly has completed this type of report, and we are very pleased with the outcome. We really thought that it created a great understanding of all things that really makes the city strong and it helps capture things that will be a great example for other cities moving forward. So, the report itself, what's included in it is that it discusses really risk planning and opportunities around the city's operations, environmental considerations and efforts to strengthen the community and support its residents and its employees. The process to develop the report was that Baker-Tilly worked with the mayor and Greg as the city controller to identify the team members from the city who would work with us. We had an initial meeting with the team members and we were able to ask questions, gather information and to determine what would be included in the report. We also interviewed the fire chief and the police chief separately. We compiled the report that with the team together and presented the final draft to the mayor and the deputy mayor as well as Greg, were input again, and we're sharing the final version of that report with the council tonight. There we go. Okay. So, really, we were very pleased with the team that the city brought to the table. We had 100% participation in the people that the mayor and Greg had asked to participate, including the HR director, legal counsel, and we received really thoughtful input from the participants, spending two mornings solid gathering that information, and it enabled us to better capture all these things that make the city very strong and resilient. So, focusing first on government resiliency. Investors are very focused on fiscal transparency and Greenwood has implemented some excellent best practices from the Government Finance Officers Association in his work with the council to provide the council as well as the community as a whole with easy access to this information about the city's financial position and its health. Human Resources works hard to make sure that employees are trained and city's safety standards are enforced and really this makes it a better and safer place for the city, ways to work and also save the city money. The city actively works to mitigate risk by following policies, developing internal controls and working to protect the city against cyber attacks and other risks that the city faces. And from a planning perspective, planning is perhaps one of the most important things to position the city as for resiliency. The city's completed extensive plans and, as you know, it's in the process of, or maybe almost completed with a comprehensive plan. It also has a unified development ordinance that assists with implementing planned growth and a robust GSI system that's a useful tool for operations as well as for community members as a whole. And I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Rachel Westervelt, to talk about the environmental part. There we go.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, I'll be going over the last couple of sections we've included in the resiliency report, and one of those sections is environmental resiliency. And to create a resilient environment, the city works to understand and plan for environmental risks such as natural disasters, flooding, wind and storms. And highlighted in the report are potential natural disaster risks related to Greenwood specifically as well as risk mitigation and efforts the city has agreed with and identified. Environmental mitigation efforts include sewer overflow projects such as sewer projects to and reduce overflow, as well as stormwater management projects that help mitigate drainage from stormwater runoff. The report touches on opportunities for green infrastructure development through stormwater departments, public-private partnerships, and it also includes an overview of the city's creation of green space through its parks and trails that not only help reduce pollution and greenhouse gas emissions, but also assist with flooding mitigation. Other green initiatives highlighted in the report are the construction of roundabouts that create better traffic flow and reduce emissions from vehicles, as well as the city's participation in this sort of climate action plan. We highlighted renewable energy efforts at the city's facilities such as LED lighting and the use of geothermal energy at the fire stations. Electric vehicle charging stations are placed throughout the city. We've included the Greenwood Goes Green initiative that promotes public awareness and participation to support a sustainable economy. The sustainability green policy highlighted in the Boykin book is included. Waste management and recycling services provided by the city. We've also highlighted the air filtration system at the city center building that helps reduce the spread of viruses that cause airborne illnesses. The last section included in the resiliency report addresses the importance of building a resilient community. And to build a resilient community, Greenwood has created initiatives and opportunities to support residents and create a high quality of life, and that really starts with the public safety. Public safety efforts highlighted in the report, because they create a safe environment for residents and your employees. Information was gathered from both the police and fire departments surrounding training and mental health initiatives for officers and firefighters as well as residents. And we've also highlighted community outreach efforts through the participation in events and school programs as well as outreach through social media platforms. The report also contains information on how the city and police and fire departments have responded to recent public safety events and the additional training and public safety upgrades that have been established as a result of those events. And that really highlights the city's proactive approach to creating a safer environment. Greenwood provides residents with a variety of community amenities. In the report, we highlight the fieldhouse, the community center and the new pickleball courts at Freedom Park. Also discussed in the report are amenities related to parks and green space as well as performing arts and programs that are offered to residents. The report touches on the importance and purpose of the redevelopment commission to grow and attract businesses and how the city supports those businesses through the grow initiatives that offer matching funds to restore, upgrade and enhance building exteriors and business signs and lighting. The city also supported the Central Nine Career Center through a grant program for security equipment and security programs. The city is part of the county's local economic development organization, Aspire, that works to attract and retain and expand businesses in the county. And other initiatives highlighted in the report include the community development block grant funds, combating addiction in the city by making Narcan more readily available, and also the city's involvement in the community crossings, matching grant programs that allow for local street maintenance. And lastly, the city is also building communities resiliency by supporting the city employees to ensure a positive work environment. Support for employees includes employee benefits such as medical vision, dental insurance at the LA, PTO, pension programs, et cetera. Employees also have access to free memberships to community amenities and facilities. And the Greenwood Health and Wellness Center provides medical services to employees at no cost for those involved in city benefits. The city also participates annually in a salary survey to ensure that employee compensation is fair. And all of these efforts really made by the city to ensure the health and well-being of its employees.
So, we just want to thank the city and we're happy to answer any questions that the council may have on the report. We did re-copy, so there's a special copy to use for use. Hopefully, it's a good tool. Really, the city is doing some amazing things. It's really neat when we capture it all in one document to help illustrate that.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much. Any committee or board reports? As most of you know, I was not here the last couple of weeks, and so I was not able to attend the RBC meeting. However, when I get a copy of the minutes, I will forward those on to you. So, any other committee or board reports? All right, this time, Christian Mizlowski with the Aspire Economic Development and Chamber Alliance. Like to update us on their activities.
Thank you very much, Council President Campbell and members of the council. I'm Christian Mizlowski, President and CEO of Aspire. Johnson County with me today is Amanda Rubidu, our Vice President of Economic Development. We're here today because we are so proud to represent the city with stakeholders and companies and serve the city. We primarily work through the mayor's office, but we want to make sure you receive a personal update on our activities. I think you're all familiar with Aspire Johnson County. We are the county's state-recognized local economic development organization and Chamber of Commerce. We're a single nonprofit organization with a Board of Directors and two governance councils. The city does sit on our Economic Development Advisory Council. Our services span all of the areas that you would expect a comprehensive economic development and Chamber of Commerce to serve, economic development, business advocacy, workforce development. So, we formed in January of 2020 through the merger of two organizations, and we've had quite a remarkable journey. We're really proud of that work. We just wanted to highlight some of that, you know, we've just exploded in terms of our revenue and our activity. We've grown our staff team to better serve the community and have better impact. We've launched economic development programs that our county really didn't formally have. I think what we're most excited about, and Amanda's going to talk about it later, is our workforce development efforts. We're doing things today that we only imagined we'd be able to be doing today. I mean, while we are your Chamber of Commerce and we're proud of the work we do on that front because the city invested in us for our economic development activity, we want to focus on that area of our work, starting with introducing you to the entire department. So, I've indicated myself and Amanda are here. Pat Moon is on our team. She's our Business Economic Development Specialist. She focuses on business retention expansion. And Jennifer Hollingshead, who focuses on our workforce development efforts. So, when we formed Aspire, the community got together and said, okay, we believe this is the right thing to do. It was a merger of aspiration, not desperation, but where are we heading? What is our north star? And we interviewed community members, stakeholders. We got focus groups together. Mayor Myers and several of you were part of those conversations. We kept hearing, you know, well, we're getting a lot of jobs, which is great, but we want more jobs in life sciences and IT and engineering and all the games and advanced manufacturing. It was okay, and we did a little research and we discovered a Brookings Institute report that said, hey, these industries collectively across the United States are responsible for most of the economic development activity and growth. And they've been the steady ed, ed growers, and they defined them as the advanced industry super sector. We said, aha, that is what the community has been telling us they want. So, we said, we're feeling pretty good, pretty bold at the time. So, we're going to grow jobs in Johnson County by 50%, 50% more in advanced industry jobs in Johnson County. We're going to grow the wages for all workers. So, pandemic, you know, set us back a little bit. Those industries in particular figured out that folks can work from home, but we certainly have had some success in other areas. And there are five key areas that bubble up to support those two strategic goals. So, I want to get into some of the activity updates that we've been working on, starting with, of course, our company project leads. That is one of the primary roles that we serve for the city of Greenwood. There's a high demand and high interest in a business location for Johnson County and Greenwood in particular. We primarily get our leads from site selectors and brokers and companies contacting us directly. The Indy Partnership, which is the regional marketing group for the Indy region. They are telling the story globally about bringing a business here. And the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. Primarily, the Indiana Economic Development Corporation forgets most of our leads. And you'll see there's a graph at the bottom kind of showing our activity. Now, this chart is showing what we have pitched. This isn't all the leads that have come our way. These are just the ones that we've responded to because sometimes they're not good fits for our community. We don't have the right inventory or with the Indiana Economic Development Corporation focusing so heavily on the EV industry and semiconductors, you know, those are massive projects. We don't always have the land, but we sometimes forget that batteries, we just plug them in and go. We put them in our cars and go. It's a chemical reaction that makes that energy occur. And so, there are some environmental risks with that that our communities and Greenwood included just aren't really willing to take. And so, we don't always get to pitch those projects. So, there was, you know, 2022 has probably been almost the most typical year. It's been a wild ride the last four years of pandemic. Of course, 2020 suppressed everything, pushed everything to 2021, and that's when projects came roaring back. And then 22 again was kind of typical, tapered off at the end of the year when the interest rates started going high. 23, we saw interest rates high and projects kind of hit pause a little bit. We're starting to see things return to a little bit more normal, projects that were paused or reaching out saying, hey, you know what? Where do you go? We figured out the financing piece. This is the world we're living in. We've got it set. So, things are starting to be a little more typical. As I indicated, we do have now, we've established a formal retention program, and then our economic council takes that strategic plan. And every six, eight, 10 months, we are going through it to reprioritize. So, it's a lot. It's an ambitious plan with a lot of activity, and we have to make sure we're staying focused on what is most needed. And so, we do take it, an opportunity to prioritize that. Our community workshops is a way we help to develop the community and bring community leaders together to have conversations about obstacles that we're working on. Again, in order to pitch the city and the county to a company, we have to make sure that our product, which is the community, is a healthy and a robust environment ripe for business development. So, that's going to lead into our site selection activity again. As I indicated, it's one of the primary areas that we serve the city. I'm going to turn it over to Amanda, who's had a unique experience of being on both sides of the table. She worked for a site-selecting firm and then now is a local economic development organization.
Worked for municipalities, so I've seen quite a bit of it. So, I know some of you were part of our economic development for elected officials, so you might have seen a little part of this. But the lead process is really like a giant funnel of sites and communities competing for high-quality companies and jobs to land in their areas. Site selectors start with a wish list from their clients, the company, and all of the things that they would need in a new location or expansion opportunity. So, the site selector whittles down either states or regions based on that wish list. So, the client needs to be near one of the coasts, one of their suppliers. They want only renewable energy, which we've been hearing a lot more about. They want to be near a major research institution, different things like that bubble up on that wish list. Once that wish list is down to a manageable number of states or regions, we then get to actually see that wish list. So, that's when we get those RFIs, those requests for information from IVC, and we try to match a site with that wish list. We confirm that it's a desirable industry, as Christian was mentioning, for that community or the site, and then reply with all the information they've requested. Sometimes that's a lot of information. Sometimes that's phase one. Sometimes that's, you know, what's the strength of the floor? Will it hold a crane? You know, all of those different things. So, there's a lot of data that we have to gather on these sites. So, one of our sites bubbles up to the top and remains on that shortlist. The site selector then requests a letter outlining potential incentives. I had a site selector say to me once that this is like requesting a marriage proposal before your first blind date. So, they recognize that it's kind of backwards. So, but this is then where I start to work with the mayor's office to provide incentives, information to the potential company, and then we kind of start that negotiation process. But what happens before we get a lead? I assure you, we are not sitting around waiting on the phone to ring. You know, we need to be aware of the sites that are available, which are coming online, which now have a tenant, which, you know, we need to be aware. We need to know the utility capacity, as I mentioned, is there an industry type? Is residential near the site? Does the city have planned retail along a major corridor? We need to have a workforce and industry data on hand. Sometimes that's running reports to have turned around in a couple of hours. So, developing relationships with those site selectors and brokers so that we can play both offense and defense because sometimes, as Christian mentioned, we get projects that you guys aren't necessarily interested in. And so, that's us also talking with the brokerage community and explaining to them like, oh, that's not going to work on that site. You know, we've had other folks try that. That's not going to work on that site. So, playing again, defense on your behalf as well. It's also telling our story nationally, working to attract companies and talent to Greenwood and Johnson County. This is my favorite part to talk about. I'm really excited about this, so I'll do my best not to get long-winded. Talking about workforce development, this is where I get to show off all of the work our full-time school-to-work specialist, Jennifer Hollingshead, has been doing over the last, the past school year. Jennifer's job is to connect our businesses with the classroom and students to career opportunities in Johnson County. I make the joke that we're not making enough people right now, so we need to make sure the ones that we are making stay here and have the opportunity to see different careers and things like that so they can either come back to or jump right into right after high school. So, during the 2023-2024 school year, our second full school year of doing this, we had over 3,000 engagements with teachers, businesses and our students. This included an internship 101 that we hosted for businesses in all industries to learn how to develop an internship program. Our teacher field trips have started back up. We've already had one. We've got a couple more in the works that we're really excited about. We've got really good feedback from the teachers on that. We supply business leaders to help conduct mock interviews, judge medical device shark tank events and hosted education industry collaborative each month where we were business leaders, K-12 schools and higher ed get-together to collaborate on schoolwork initiatives. We've hosted some hands-on career exposure events for students, including the trades and in the medical fields. This year, we'll be assisting our schools with some new regulations from the state as a designated intermediary by the Commission for Higher Education by providing small group presentations by business leaders to students, just adding to our strong relationship already that we have with our schools. So, on the talent attraction side. There we go. So, on the marketing piece, we're also launching a national talent attraction campaign where we'll be showcasing Johnson County-focused content with our partners at Indy Partnership and the Life in Indy campaign. So, this is really an established national social media and digital marketing campaign that we're going to be far away their feet and do Johnson County-centric marketing. So, I mentioned our life sciences marketing campaign on the last slide where we worked with our Indy Partnership and the Giselle software that scores companies based on their ability to grow and go grow or desire to relocate to new markets. We ran a search on life sciences companies that could expand into the Midwest and came up with a list of about 200 companies. This was one of the three postcards that went out. And between emails and postcards, we had over 2,000 touches with life sciences companies. So, what can you expect in 2024 through the rest of the year? We will be continuing to support our existing businesses. We'll continue to meet with our existing businesses to connect them to the resources that they need to stay and grow here in Johnson County and our communities. We are launching a new marketing campaign that will continue to foster relationships with real estate professionals, telling our community stories and also playing defense on your behalf. So, I'm going to go ahead and wrap this up. We have also been part of the ready and working alongside your team to make sure that our Johnson County communities have representation in the room. Later this year, we'll be launching that digital talent attraction campaign. And we've also recently taken over the Employer Resource Network Program, which was previously housed with the Johnson County Community Foundation, is now over at Aspire, and it is an employee support and extension program. We're very excited about that. Christian, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council? I personally appreciate the work you all do in promoting Johnson County.
Right, 2.0, right. Does that, are any ideas on what anybody in Johnson County might be doing?
Just got a question this afternoon.
We did. I didn't see it. What are we doing?
We've got a few projects in that were, excuse me, that were approved in Johnson County. We're excited about that.
Any other questions?
Yes. I don't have figures or anything like that. That wasn't in the press release, so we did get the press release today.
Totally wasn't a setup for you to pump the press release.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We should have liked the press release.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is a time for public comments. And I'm sure we have some public, you'd like to make some comments tonight. So, and I'm assuming most, if not all, of you are here in regards to the proposed modifications to ordinance 2403. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address the council about another item that is on tonight's agenda? This first opportunity is for items that are on the agenda, and there's a five-minute time limit per speaker and a 20-minute time limit per topic. So, is there anyone here that would like to talk to us about something other than the modification? Okay, we cut that out of the way. Then at this time, we'll open up the podium to people, anyone who'd like to speak concerning the modification of the ordinance twenty-four oh three. There's a five-minute time limit per person and a twenty-minute time limit per topic. So I would encourage you to not repeat and to use your time wisely. Obviously, if each person takes five minutes or four people to talk, this is not, the council meeting is not like the plan commission where there is time for people to report, time for people are against it, and it's time for rebuttal. That doesn't take place here. And when this comes up on the agenda, staff will have a presentation to the council. At that time, the public will not be allowed to speak, so this is your opportunity. So I would encourage you to take advantage of that now if you wish to do so. So if you step to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please. And if you have handouts, please give a copy to the clerk.
Good evening. My name is Mark Webb of Florida Valley Lane, speaking on behalf of the residents of Green Valley Estates and entered subdivisions and a little bit for Villa Heights. Now, to be short, I have a handout, but I'm going to jump around and save the time. I'd like to start under opening remarks, I'd be. The reason we are here tonight, if you were to go to the city of Greenwood website, under live and then go to move to Greenwood, the very first sentence that would greet you says, and I quote, "It's probably our safe streets and walkable neighborhoods." I mean, why we should live in Greenwood again. It is these very things that we feel the changes to the council amendment are going to put at risk tonight. And we're here to discuss those items. Secondly, we'd like to reassure the council members who voted with us and stood with us back in February, you made the right choice, and that choice is still correct, again, see. Going on to section five, called misconceptions, moving specifically towards section A. There's been some discussion about whether or not the conditions that were passed by the city council were in fact legal. We think there are some misconceptions here, and so we'd like to walk through some of those with you to help put your minds at ease. We see the relationship between the comprehensive plan and the UDO as one where the UDO is the means by which the objectives of the comprehensive plan are achieved. In both of these, safety is a prime concern. In keeping with uniformity, item B, and safety, the comprehensive plan and the UDO, unified ordinance W, hope to fund street classifications, hierarchy, and connectivity objectives. See, current street classifications from the comprehensive plan for Green Valley, Lee Lane, and Bay Street are currently classified as minor or local streets. Turn in the page. UDO defines the purpose and hierarchy of the streets, which includes local collector and arterial lanes. In our first example, collector street. A street intended to move traffic from local streets to secondary arteries. A collector street serves as a neighborhood, for the neighborhood or a large subdivision, and should be designed so that no residential properties face onto it and no driveways access it, access to it is permitted unless the property is to be a multifamily use for four or more dwelling units. In practice, this can be impossible to achieve in an existing neighborhood. As an example, if we look at Yorktown Road, it is defined in the comprehensive plan as a collector street. York, excuse me, Yorktown has own spacing that street, and it also has driveways connected to that street. Technically, this would be a violation of the UDO, and it is still a collector street. Another item that was considered was circulation within and connection to the city's existing street network. The UDO states, minor street should be designed to provide access to each parcel of land within a subdivision or a development to adjoining undeveloped tracks in a manner that will encourage connectivity with the existing street network, but discourage heavy use by for traffic. Time permitted, we won't jump to a traffic study, but from information provided in the twenty-eleven traffic study, as we will demonstrate, there could be no doubt.
You have, you have one minute.
One minute. Let me jump to the traffic study, okay? The traffic study states that there will be heavy traffic increasing the traffic on the road by up to two hundred and by over a hundred percent, double the number of homes that are currently there. In conclusion, like the state the last page. That the information that we would express now was collected by volunteers collecting it in email campaigns, that most, that all the residents are opposed to this, that we contacted by either method, reaffirm the council made the right choice by standing with us back in February. As you see tonight, this intention of progress is still valid. And probably the quote, one last thought, it says, "When is a road more than a road?" It is so when it unites a community rather than divided. When a road unites a community to fight for the safety of our children, the enjoyment of our families, and friends and tranquility of our homes. We ask you, common, common council, stand with us again tonight and vote against any modification to the argument. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tyler Jones. I live at five-six-six Awkward Drive, just right on the street from Martin here. And I'm going to touch a couple of things that he kind of brought up. The U, the UDOs and ordinance and regulations are a wall. I'm sure you're all aware, as a guide that gives us instruction as to developments, regulations to which we want to stand together as a community, to develop our community. Under section ten oh one oh four, there's a list in there that says, "Special or unusual conditions or circumstances, or where there is an apparent safety hazard, the plan condition may prescribe additional requirements to protect health, safety, morals, and general welfare." I believe that not having sidewalks on our streets would fall under unusual conditions, circumstances, and an apparent safety hazard. Under section ten oh two oh five, short version, "This approach to regulating developments standard promotes development intensities that match existing and improve infrastructures." That existing infrastructure there has the sidewalks. So I believe that it should be fair to say that the new development against the UDO should not have sidewalks either in the new development, because that would be in line with the UDO, section ten oh two oh five. And section ten oh six oh five R, and there's a line there that reads, "Permanent dead-end street shall not be permitted." And that has been brought to our attention multiple times. Selectively, the line that says, "When permitted, some streets shall have a barrier," has always been left out. It's always been that first section, you know, prohibited, you can't do it. But let's leave out the spot that says, "When permitted," directly after that. I think we have a special condition of having, not having sidewalks. I make an appointment with my three-year-old and my five-year-old now that when a car comes down the street, it's grass, the tires are the grass, or it's the grass. Once there's more cars there, I don't know that it can be a safe space. I teach my three-year-old how to ride without training, just like I just did my five-year-old. I would encourage you to not connect vehicular traffic to the neighborhoods that do not have sidewalks. There's a thousand ways to connect the streets, the neighborhoods, and the new development. I think there's a one particular answer that is going to provide safety to the, to the current neighborhoods. And what a wonderful night to bring all this up, because we have a risk management, risk mitigation to the city of Greenwood. I think putting children, families that utilize the streets without sidewalks at risk might need to be mitigated. Thank you.
After Oldstead, fourteen ninety-one, Hunter's Land. I find it especially ironic that city personnel are now fighting against your modification, arguing to follow plans. For decades, we've had a plan. And that was for that land to be single-family residential. I would argue what you ought to do if they're going to ask to take off modifications is go back and rescind the rezoning. Those modifications were important. I live in Hunting Creek. I've been there for nineteen years, been paying taxes the whole time. My family moved here in nineteen seventy-seven. My parents still live here. My sister lives here. My brother lives here. We've been paying our taxes. I would ask that you listen to the people who have been here, as your neighbors, and friends, and colleagues, and voters, and stop listening to the outsiders trying to put us in danger. In Hunting Creek, we're all single-family residential. Villa Heights, they're single-family residential. Now you're taking the smallest parcel of twenty-eight acres, you're putting about a hundred and fifty doors there, and you're trying to connect us. It's not appropriate. There are plenty of neighborhoods, including in Greenwood, that have a single entrance. If they want to put a hundred and fifty doors there and have it just go out on the main street, have at it. One of the things they talk about are shorter EMS and the fire times for having connected streets. I've read that study that the federal government tried to manufacture its junk. And I'd be happy to show you with the fire chief how it makes absolutely no sense to come up one thirty-five, turn on Smith Valley, turn left into Hunting Creek, turn left again, go around the circle, turn left, go up, turn another left, and then try to go right instead of drive up one thirty-five to Main Street, turn right. This is dumb. Moreover, what they don't tell you. Also not safe is how there are much higher crime rates when you have communities that have a front and back entrance, because the thieves can get in and out. You want to decrease crime? Keep them single entrances. Now, Mr. Walker used to come around and drive in the fields, and occasionally we'd go out and visit. I took my kids out to see him. I've got to tell you, I never once heard him say anything about wanting his legacy to be townhomes shoved up on Main Street so it couldn't be wiped. On the other hand, you like fresh air. You've got a chance to stop the development if you choose and do something that makes sense with what your earlier visitors were describing. Because I would think what would be really nice is a park there. It's only twenty-one acres, but we don't have a park in that area of the city, certainly nothing connected. And I think people who know Mr. Walker would agree with me that that's what he would want. And again, I would ask you, please listen to us. We've been paying taxes here for decades. You've got a chance to stop this and make it right. If they're not going to agree with your modifications, then stop it completely.
Good evening. My name's Patricia Rainey. I live at two forty-two Victory Avenue in Villa Heights. And one thing that, Villa Heights was planted in May of nineteen sixty-six. And then Villa Heights, at that time, were White River Township, and we were part of Center Grove. But the city of Greenwood decided to annex us into the city. And so in doing so, that became finalized in nineteen ninety-one. Now, I moved to Victory Avenue in nineteen ninety-two, but my in-laws owned the home as a brand-new home in nineteen sixty-eight. Now, I'm seeing the, the progress that City of Greenwood has done over the years. I used to work for a printing company that printed for the City of Greenwood, and I worked with Mayor Myers when we were ten thousand people. And when I retired from printing, we were doing twenty-five thousand newsletters to the city residents of Greenwood. When Villa Heights started, it was a part of a church. It was owned by the Church of God. And when the houses were built, we fought to keep a church there. And that's why the streets are named Love, Melody, Victory, Faith, and Hope. It's because we were a church, and we fought a few years back to not let that become a business. And today, we stand before you because as a residential area, we are not an HOA. We watch out for each other. We watch out for our neighbors. And when people come in that don't agree with us, then there can be consequences. I teach my children and my grandchildren that with every decision, there is a consequence. We can make a decision because we, we get together and we're buddies, we think things over, and we can make a decision that will be long-lasting. So I ask you today to think about the decision you're going to make. There will be consequences. Villa Heights today has more little children, even newborn babies, than we've had in years. Those kids come out, they go down to the church, and they play on the church park, the playground that the church built. They tore it down last year, come back this year and built a new one, and said, "The kids are welcome here." But how can they go safely to a church when the streets are going to be so crowded with additional traffic? We have no sidewalks. We have no curbs. My yard got damaged last winter because the snowplow driver thought you should come up into my yard and damage. Now, take into thought, before you okay this, is it because you want Greenwood to grow more? Or is it because you're getting the cart ahead of the horse? If you want us to have more apartments, more townhomes, more, 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 then protect the ones that are already here. Put in the streets.
You have one minute.
Put in the sidewalks and say, "Okay, now we're ready to move on to this next step." Why didn't we submit our road? Why didn't Main Street? Why didn't Dry Road prepare for the onslaught of the, of the traffic instead of doing it all and then throwing the traffic out there on us? I ask you to really think about the consequences. I trust you. I honestly do. I prayed before I came here tonight that each one of you sitting here would have wisdom and direction for God, that you would take into consideration children's lives and not take a chance on someone getting hurt. Litigation, I have homeowner's insurance to protect me, but you have city insurance to protect you.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Two and a half minutes.
I'll take the rest. Parents party, bishop of the Church of God, representing the state of Indiana, the Church of God in Indiana, to which the preceding speaker just spoke. It was one of my predecessors, Dr. Cecil McKnight, who was the developer of that subdivision, and that day it was developed. We currently continue to own the residency at three oh five, three fifteen Love Avenue, particularly three oh five, and Love and Faith, which is the inlet to the proposed amendment that you were talking about opening up that road. It's a very short road. It's a very short road and the radius is very narrow. It is my concern that we have three properties that in this particular, to Faith Street, that would abut up against any roadway that would lead into this proposed subdivision. The concern there is already very narrow and any widening would shorten an already short driveway for the two residents that are directly on Faith Street, which is one of our own residents that we still own today. And so for safety reasons, there is a third component that has not been mentioned tonight that I will conclude with. It is the concern of devaluation of properties that exist. Any widening or connecting to the road on those particular properties will without doubt devalue the properties as they are. So for that reason, amongst those that have already been stated today, I would certainly urge you to exercise the wisdom and advice of those constituents who have come today to express their concerns and their opinions and that you would vote against this for the sake and the safety of our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Before we move on, since not everyone was able to speak, I'd like for you to at least have your voice heard. If you're here tonight and are opposed to these modifications, just please raise your hand. All right, and thank you very much. And if you're here tonight and are in favor of these modifications, would you raise your hand? If you'd be nearest to us. Thank you. All right. Moving on, ordinances and resolutions. Notice that just consider there is none. First reading, ordinance number 2416.
And ordinance providing four additional appropriations from the Fire Fund, budget classifications 422, $135,828, 429, $39,654, and 431, $31,080 for new hire supplies, equipment, and physicals, and to budget classification, 439, $13,342 for tornado sirens to upgrade sponsored by Gibson, Hopper, Lexi, Manship, and Moe.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Ms. Gibson's second by Ms. Manship. It is scheduled for a public hearing tonight, so we will open up for a public hearing. And if you're here tonight and wish to speak for or against ordinance number 2416, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seen done. Public hearing. Any discussion on the council? Since we have quite a few people in our audience who normally aren't here, on these additional appropriations, that's when the city requests to spend money that's not been budgeted and they require a public hearing. And unfortunately, all too often, it's just like tonight, we're getting ready to spend additional money and no one from the public spoke either for or against it, so. But that's the process. It'll take the vote tonight and then a lot of that will vote in a couple of weeks. So that's why the public hearing on these additional appropriations. Any discussion on the council? During the roll call, first reading ordinance 2416.
Betra.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Moe.
Aye.
Ordinance 2416 passes first reading on a vote of eight to zero. Ordinance 2417.
And ordinance vacating from the drainage and utility easement in Seven Park Block C sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gibson's second, second by Mr. Lexi. I believe we have.
A proposed amendment.
Yes.
At the time you had your public hearing and the ordinance was introduced, you did not have your recommendations from the Plan Commission and Board of Works and Safety as required by the ordinance to petition for a vacating notice. Since that time, you have received those. And so we also received an updated and revised legal description and drawing. So I am going to recommend that you amend ordinance 2417 in the third whereas clause to include the recommendations of the Plan Commission and Board of Public Works and Safety to recommend approval subject to meeting the following conditions. One, prior to construction of the new detention facility, a replat of Block C of Seven Park will be reported with the following note. The easement drainage and utility easement per instrument number 92015774 as shown in agreement with common capital ordinance number 2417. Or the existing detention facility shall be vacated and nullified upon the successful completion and operational status of the new detention facility as verified by the city engineer and the recording of the vacation ordinance. Petitioner must also plat the new detention easement on the replat of Block C of Seven Park number two. Prior to reporting in the vacation ordinance, the petitioner must complete the construction of the new detention facility and ensure its functionality. The new detention facility must be fully operational. Only after the new detention facility is confirmed operational by the city engineer and all related documentation submitted may the vacation ordinance be reported. I therefore amend amendment to section one to include described and shown as follows and deleting and substituting the former drawing with the drawing and legal description that has been provided in the proposed red line. And following the words is vacated from section one at the additional language provided that petitioner meets the conditions that are set forth in the whereas clause above to the satisfaction of the city.
Do you have a motion to that fact? Motion by Ms. Gibson. Do I have a second? Second motion, Mr. Lexi? All right, so we have a motion to amend ordinance 2417 as presented. Any discussion on the amendment? During the roll call on the amendment to ordinance 2417.
I was just going to say I'm here to answer any questions on the one motion that I created.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. All right, roll call on the motion to amend ordinance 2417.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Moe.
Aye.
And Betra.
Aye.
Ordinance 2417 is amended on a vote of eight to zero. Any discussion on ordinance 2417 as amended? During the roll call, ordinance 2417 as amended, first reading.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Moe.
Aye.
Betra.
Aye.
And Campbell.
All right, ordinance 2417 as amended passes first reading eight to zero. A new business, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions, ordinance number 2418.
An ordinance providing four additional appropriations from the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund to budget classification 431, $2,450,914, and the KinoTip Capital Development Fund to budget classification 431, $187,200 sponsored by Gibson and Hopper.
Right.
Good evening. Greg Wright, City Controller. As you may recall, back in 2021, we received a disbursement from the American Rescue Plan Act just over $6.6 million. Part of the rules on that is that by the end of this year, all of that money must be under contract or committed. And then by the end of 2026, it must all be spent. With the two projects here that we're looking at, this will take us to just under $100,000 remaining of those funds. Part of what we're asking is to fund the Main Street design and right-of-way services for Main Street between Meridian all the way to Airport. We've got two different projects going there basically to widen that sidewalks, curb, stormwater along that as well. That's part of a larger, longer-term project to the Main Street corridor all the way up to I-65 and then further east. The other piece of that, the biggest piece of that is the Market Plaza project. We're looking to fund that construction contract from the ARBA funds under what's known as revenue replacement. The final rule on the ARBA funds was that if you receive less than $10 million, you could claim up to $10 million under the revenue replacement standard, allowing you to utilize those funds for any legal purpose of the city. I will kind of recall some of the items we have used this for and then move on to the last piece of this. So as you may recall, we did security grants for the three school systems as well as C9. We did premium pay for employees. We did a backup generator here at the city center. The additional cost for two pieces of fire apparatus, the air purification system here, security camera upgrades, cybersecurity upgrades, an emergency radio booster at the Greenwood Park Mall, some new storm sirens, respirator pit testers for the fire department are some of the other projects we've done the last year here, obviously the Market Plaza construction and then Main Street. And then finally, the piece coming from the CCD funds that we're looking at is a road impact fee study. This is similar to something like our park impact fees where developers would pay into this basically to offset the cost of the additional stress that their developments will place on the roads in that area. The study total cost is projected $187,200. Should we determine, should this body determine after that study to adopt any road impact fee? We can actually reimburse the city for the cost of that study from those fees as we collect them. I did bring Park St. John, our city engineer, to discuss how that might work since he's been kind of spearheading that project. But I do know that the county already does have a road impact fee in place and there are many other communities that do it, so it wouldn't be something that is unheard of. And like I said, it's similar to what we do whether for the sewers or whether for the parks where as you do new developments, it's going to cause additional needs for roads. So this would help to pay for those needs by having developers pay per plot to be redeveloped.
All right, any questions for Mr. Wright? All right, thank you. Ordinance 2419.
And ordinance amending Chapter Two, Article Six, Section Two dash thirty-eight, on the Greenwood Municipal Code as amended, designating no parking on portions of Paradise Way West, North and East Drives sponsored by Gibson.
I will talk about this one.
Good evening. Park St. John, city engineer. This was a request that came in through a citizen in the area, some of those in that neighborhood. There was previously no parking signs in this area along these streets listed. They were not backed up by any ordinance. Signs don't create the law, they only tell people what the law is. This is a street that probably came out there and removed those signs and now we're in the process of both reestablishing both new areas.
Are there any questions?
Mr. President, I would like to ask for suspension of the rules through first reading. These people are having, excuse me, a terrible problem with parking over there. It's eating estates and it's just as you, if you are going coming eastbound on Smith Valley bypass and then you go past Rusty Creek, it's the next street after Rusty Creek goes through. And there's a lot of, if you call it townhomes, or I think there's a combination of things there, but the people are fighting over parking spots.
Right, we have a motion by Ms. Gibson to suspend the rules on ordinance 2419, your first reading, second by Mr. Moe. Was that, or Mr. Hopper, I'm sorry. Any discussion on suspension? And then the roll call, suspension of the rules, the first reading of ordinance 2419.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Moe.
Aye.
Betra.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
And Gibson.
Aye.
Rules are suspended through first reading on a vote of eight to zero. Do you have a motion on first reading? Motion by Ms. Gibson's second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? And then the roll call, ordinance 2419, first reading.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Moe.
Aye.
Betra.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
And Bill.
Ordinance 2419 passes first reading on a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you very much. People have been without signs or suspended.
Keep going on. I'm here to suspend the rules through second. We have a motion by Mr. Lexi to suspend the rules through second reading on ordinance 2419, second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on suspension? And then the roll call, suspension through second reading.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Moe.
Aye.
Betra.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Hopper.
Rules are suspended through second reading on ordinance 2419. Do you have a motion on second reading? Motion by Mr. Moe, second, second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on ordinance 2419? During the roll call, ordinance 2419, second reading.
Manship.
Aye.
Moe.
Aye.
Betra.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
And Lexi.
Order 2419 passes second reading on a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you very much. They more appreciate your efforts.
Miscellaneous business. This is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the council. This time concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda, so if you'd wish to do so, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seen done, then moving on, miscellaneous business from the council. Do we have a conflict of interest?
Yes, you do. There is a conflict of interest for Christopher Jones or his son Elliot Jones for any earnings that Mr. Jones, who is the superintendent of the stormwater department, may have in Elliot's earnings as he is working part-time for the Board of Public Works and Safety.
We have a motion by Mr. Hopper to accept, second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, it is approved unanimously. All right, the request to modify the commitments to ordinance 2413 on the Walker property, I believe somebody has a presentation.
At Hamilton with Apollo Overseas, 8904 Bass Street, Indianapolis, Louisiana. I'm here to, I think everyone knows I'm here. So at the February council meeting where our rezoning ordinance was adopted, there were three commitments that were presented at the time of that we asked to related to traffic. In addition to those commitments, there were commitments of the traffic structure being completed, which was completed by day after March, by the city. There was also continued conditions that staff through their technical advisory committee process and through the planning process would vet out each of these traffic conflicts. So I had the feeling I was the only one that raised my hand when you asked if I was in support. I'm not necessarily in support of removing, of adding connections. I'm not here in support of removing those conditions, but still allowing the process to go through to the primary plan process and the technical advisory committee with the City of Greenwood and City of departments, planning departments. So I'm here if anybody has any questions.
What prevents you from moving forward with those conditions in there?
That's a good question. So those three conditions are correctly in conflict with the requirements within the Unified Development ordinance in City of Greenwood. They'd be required to have a waiver, waiver at the planning process, which would be vetted out by the Department of Plan Commission at that time. They're in conflict with it and they're also in conflict with some of the other commitments where that would be vetted through the technical advisor committee process.
So there is a method to do it forward, you just don't like it?
I'm here because it's a conflict with the video. So there's a process to have in those connections removed as well without those commitments. And I know that I'm not necessarily here because I'm advocating for the connections. I'm here because of the conflict with the video.
Is it because in order to move forward, you have to have some sort of waiver with the Plan Commission? So is it a loop within our system that's so concerned? Because I feel like if it's an ordinance that we made, it's not like we can always change.
So is it, it's a loop within our, our system that's so concerned? Because I feel like if it's an ordinance that we make, it's not like we can always change or alter.
I think that's part of it. Obviously, the planning commission has approved that.
Yeah.
And staff typically would support that. I'd say it's very atypical for a community to not have those connections. It's very common in communities that they require those connections. I haven't come across where that has been where the sub-entries would be disconnected. So there is, there is a good safety and engineering planning logic behind that. But like I said, it's not ultimately, it's not up to us to decide. It's going to be up to through the, the planning process.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Mr. Nelson?
I do have a presentation. Well, Gabe Nelson with City Planning and the planning director of the City of Greenwood. Just walking through our agenda for today, I'm going to talk a little bit about our Unified Development Ordinance and our history of subdivision ordinances in Greenwood. I'll talk about the current comprehensive plan. I'll talk about why it's important for there to be multiple ingresses and ingresses in a well-connected street system. I'll talk about safety, which I think is, everyone here in this room has concerns about safety. And I'm, we're definitely on the same page with wanting to have a safe development. And then we'll also be talking about commitment two and three, Mark St. John, our city engineer, he's also here. And he'll continue on talking about the MUTCD, which is some of the adopted signage codes by the state. But first of all, the three commitments that are in question that we would like you to terminate or modify are one, two, and three. The first one, no vehicular connection to faith, Green Valley, or Reed Lane is the one that I'll spend most of my time discussing. And Mark may want to supplement my presentation. But first, starting out, you guys can't see it, but I could. These are the three commitments. First starting out, I did some digging through some of our older planning files, and I was able to find what I believe to be the first zoning plan for the City of Greenwood, or zoning ordinance, ordinance sixty two dash seven and sixty two dash eight. And it's a total of eighteen pages. I have it here. I can pass it around if you'd like it, but this is the only copy I know of. So I would refer that back. But I've highlighted a part and standard it. I apologize for the small text on the screen. But I will leave that in our first zoning ordinance. In determining whether a flat should be approved, the commission, which is the planning commission who has the authority over our subdivisions, shall consider and state and will predict whether the flat provides for, number one, ordination of subdivision streets with existing and planned streets or highways. So in our very first ordinance, this was something that the City of Greenwood encouraged and planned for. In two thousand and two, skipping over a few renditions of our ordinance and amendments, in two thousand and two, we get a major overhaul of our ordinance. Again, you'll see that connectivity was an important general guideline for a subdivision process. Minor streets should be designed to provide access to each parcel of land within subdivision or development to adjoining undeveloped tracks and in a manner that will encourage or discourage use by through traffic. They should be planned so that future urban expansion will not require the conversion of minor street to, or, or usual route. So in our major overhaul, we had it. And then in our most recent Unified Development Ordinance, which was adopted by the Council in two thousand and twenty, there are multiple areas that discuss connectivity. And I would say the permit dead ends, I know that that was referenced before. There are instances where the planning commission can require a barricade. That is the client commission's wheelhouse or job for them to be along to look at the street connectivity and the permit dead ends. But with all intents and purposes, the stump streets in these subdivisions were intended for connectivity. And our Unified Development Ordinance requires connectivity in subdivisions. So I believe we've committed a developer to break our own Unified Development Ordinance. And the Unified Development Ordinance is a local law. I think someone has stated that it was not, the comprehensive plan is a guideline not that we need to play reasonable regard to, but our ordinance is a local law. Speaking of the action, or the comprehensive plan, our current comprehensive plan two thousand and seven to two thousand and twenty seven, which we are currently in the process of new comprehensive plan. But one of the action items in this plan with the responsible parties being planning commission, planning staff, and the city council was to provide incentives for new subdivision streets to be designed on a grid pattern respecting topography or like a gassy type we have with this property to promote connectivity. So in our current comprehensive plan, we are trying to promote connectivity. Priority is ongoing, and the title is subdivision street patterns. Now, this next image that I have, this is actually from Kentucky Transportation Cabinet showing two different neighborhoods, one with multiple connections and one with very few connections. You can see the one with very few connections. You have a longer drive time, you have more vehicle miles traveled. You also are forced to go out onto a larger or familiar road. If you're forcing everyone to one point, what you're going to do is create a bottleneck. And I'm kind of a visual that I like to think about, going thinking about roads. And that would be a colander or a strainer with multiple holes, multiple exits versus a funnel, or this is a sand timer. In fact, many transparent funnels. But if you're forcing all the traffic to one point and you're pouring water in that funnel, you're going to have water overflow, you're going to have a traffic jam, you're going to have congestion. If you provide for multiple routes for the water, which represents cars to travel, it's going to be more dispersed over a wider area, and there's going to be less traffic congestion. Just a little bit more about volatility and livability. Cast connection increases, travel distance decreases, and route options increase. The result is more direct travel between destinations in a more accessible system. As a planner and as council, we have to assess the impacts of a new subdivision for a zone fact change on the entire City of Greenwood, the entire community. We have to look at our traffic, our east-west corridors, those major architaphilias that we are possibly trying to disturb people to act, is it out onto, we have to think about that traffic congestion too. I know I hear people all the time here at this comprehensive planning process talking about east-west connectivity, traffic on Main Street. Well, to alleviate that traffic, we need to build better connected street subdivisions. Another thing that's highly talked about is safety. One of the things I want to mention is that higher street connectivity has been shown to create more safety traffic. A well-connected network of streets actually encourages slower and more cautious driving, since there are coming more intersections. If you also have a shorter distance, so there's less time that you're on the road. And then another thing that I do want to bring up, and this is probably another presentation on its own, is on wider streets do not mean safer streets. A lot of times, the more narrow the street is, your visual field narrows, and it actually makes you drive slower. That's why we have wide highways, people go much faster, the roads are designed for a faster speed. But as you get more narrow, it encourages people to slow down. In two thousand and eight, a study from the municipal services in Charlotte, North Carolina, found that the citywide average response time in subdivisions constructed in two thousand and one, since the time they enacted a minimum street connectivity standard, dropped the emergency response time by thirty seconds. That can be huge when it's a matter of someone's life. I think about people with heart attacks, medical emergencies, that time matters. I also think terrible situations like we had on Bridge Hill, where there was an explosion, where that street was blocked off. Or like an actual disaster. We've seen some tornadoes in, in this, this past summer in our, in and around our areas. If you have a street that's blocked off, you want connectivity so that the fire and emergency services can have another route to get through those people. Another thing is that the more fatal or severe crashes happen in areas where there is, are less intersections. It's when we have no connectivity and everything's forced to one major intersection. That is where more serious traffic, fatality crashes are shown to happen. In that same study that came out of North Carolina, they also found in that study that the typical coverage area of a snowplow operator doubles in areas without cul-de-sacs. A better connected street network, one where we do not have dead ends, turn arounds, cul-de-sacs, is going to allow our city services to get people faster after a snowstorm. It's just a, a more efficient way for the snowplow drivers to operate than working at a dead end or a cul-de-sac. So I didn't talk about our response times. This is the northern parcel of the snowplows. That new, I'm going back and forth a bit, but that new hash area, that's all an area that would drop to four minutes on the northern parcel. The southern two parcels, I didn't have time to cover those in GIS. And I believe those are served by White River Fire. But either way, the more connections you have, the more routes that are emergency services are going to be able to use to get to different areas. This map just kind of shows the surrounding area, different connections that we have through there, different road classifications. Encourage you to remember my strainer versus funnel scenario here. Those roads are the ones that if we're forcing everyone out of Main Street, they're going to incur due to more traffic. We need to disperse this often times. If you are supportive of less congestion in your city, it does not motivate you to come on to a council meeting. It's the people that have a project right next door that are unhappy are the ones I go to look here from. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mark St. John to talk a little bit more about commitment two and commitment three. And then at the end, I do have updated diagram of one of Apollo's parcels. I almost hesitate to show the diagram, not because I don't want you to see it, but because we're right now still in the zone map change portion of the Apollo development. It may continue to change as it works through our technical review committee. And it's not a land use site plan approval that we are asking from the council. It is a zoning approval for the underlying zone. So I will show it. But I just want you to keep that in mind.
Good evening. As Mr. Nelson introduced me, I am Mark St. John, the city engineer. According to sir, I want to answer this Betron and Mr. Hopper's question a little more directly about the waiver process. If you do not rescind these commitments tonight, they would have to come to planning commission if you get a waiver from our UPO. I think it is very likely staff would write an unfavorable recommendation on that waiver, and planning commission would be the ultimate deciding body. But if they voted no on that, that the project would die, this project would no longer move forward, they would fail to continue, if that makes sense. As Gabe alluded to, I am in full support of what he said about connections. I think he had some really good points. He also talked a lot about, well, just at the end there, about the part of the process we're in, which is the zoning. It's the underlying land use is what we're looking for. And so the zoning could change, zoning has changed, but this project could also change. And the zoning would come back for you. So someone that needs that zoning classification, that land use can come back in and develop without ever coming back to the council as long as they didn't need to resell. And so we don't often look at the technical aspects during the zoning process. The two technical aspects we're here to talk about tonight are the hallway stop that covered bridge and chipper trail and the right-in, right-out on Smith Valley Road. Those are typically looked at later in the process during the primary plan phase and during the residential site plan process. But I did want to give you some insight into what we look at when we look at these technical items. And so what I have before you today is an excerpt from the Indiana manual on uniform traffic control devices for the MUDCD. The MUDCD is put out by the US Department of Transportation. It regulates signage, signals, and pavement markings, and it makes sure that a stop sign or a traffic signal or paint on the road looks the same here in Indiana as it does anywhere in the country, and that they also function and have the same meanings. US DOT requires states to either adopt a federal document or to adopt one that substantially complies with the federal document. Here in Indiana, we've adopted one that substantially complies with the federal document. So the points I want to draw you to on an all-way stop or half-way stop, it's called the MUDCD or highlighted in yellow. It states that an all-way stop, the decision to install one should be, should be based on an engineering study. It lists minimum volumes that should be considered in that engineering study. And then at the bottom there is point D, it talks about two roads of similar operating characteristics and design could also be considered as an all-way stop. And so I'm not here tonight to say that that intersection won't be an all-way stop. In fact, based on point E below, I think there's a very strong case for it to be an all-way stop. I just don't believe it's something that should be set at the zoning phase. Those commitments are also tied to the land, not just the project, which means in the future, if a different project comes in with a different site layout, they would be committed to the same exact site conditions. When we came before you in February, when the developer did the resale, the traffic impact study had not yet been completed. But again, that's because we are looking at the zoning and not the specific land use. They have since completed a traffic impact study, as Mr. Hamilton stated earlier. Just a quick excerpt from the findings of that for the Smith Valley Road access point. It looked at it as a right-in, right-out, or R-I-R-O, and as a full-access drive. And it did find that a full-access drive operates appropriately and that there is end-to-site distance along Smith Valley Road with the installation of one, which is something I was concerned about back in Kentucky, where it. And so I would be comfortable with a full-access plan on a Smith Valley Road for this development, based on the findings of these, of this traffic impact study. And I don't know that there's a point to have a commitment for a right-in, right-out at this time. at this time. I haven't answered any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Nelson or Mr. St. John?
This is just the, on the right side where the arrows point to, I quickly try to throw in a more up-to-date northern parcel. This is the parcel that would exit out to that stop sign that was referenced, I believe is connected to. As you can see, the road more winds through the neighborhood now, it is now as much of a direction straight shot as it maybe originally was the first time that council had seen it. And then I guess Mark's point about the Plank Commission waiver and the county council commitment that goes against our subdivision standards, I guess I'm legally a little worried about what would happen next if the development would die, or if that would open us up to scrutiny for committing someone to go against our own ordinance, which council has already adopted. I'm not really sure if the development stops there, or if that can open the city up to further scrutiny.
Right. Any questions on the council?
Question for Mark. If we, if we agree to modify this and get rid of all three of these commitments, how confident are you that the access point to Smith Valley Road would be both directions?
I would, I would say yes, it would be based on the findings of that traffic impact study.
Because it seems to me that if that's full access at that point, then traffic running through these existing neighborhoods would be a lot less because you wouldn't have somebody cutting through the existing neighborhood in order to make a lifting trip.
I would agree with that.
Any other questions or comments on the council?
I have a question. I'm not sure who it's for, but I heard some discussion that there is also a state statute that has something about sted streets. Do either of you have information on that?
I don't at this time.
Thank you. Because I really feel for you to make a fully informed decision, I have to do my job and give you what the legal concerns are, okay? The statute, thirty-six, seven, four, seventy-two, that has to do with subdivision control, says if we are going to have a law, if we are going to allow subdivision of properties, we have to have a subdivision control ordinance. And it requires that the subdivision control ordinance specify the standards, including standards for public way width, grid curves, and the coordination of subdivision public ways, recurring and planned public ways. And in subsection C of that statute, it says, "A standard fixed in the subdivision control ordinance may be waived at the discretion of the Plan Commission." The Indiana legislature has vested the Plan Commission with the authority and jurisdiction to waive your subdivision control requirements. It does not lie with the body. When you put a commitment on like that, you can't order them to grant a waiver either. So you don't really have the authority to do that. It's a concern for me. Secondly, the regulation of land use in development is a police power. It's against public policy for you to contract away police power. Again, you're not authorized with the Plan Commission, you don't put in a commitment document. We're not going to enforce our ordinance that would be contracting away your police power, enforcement authority. You cannot have a state law to contract the law instead of a spy. And those are just concerns that immediately come to mind. Now, I am not a judge, I am not wearing a black robe. I just don't know what a court would say should this come to a challenge and end up in court. But I try to give you fully informed information so you can make a good decision, because I don't want you to end up in front of a judge and have to be making the black letter fall. So those are immediately some concerns that the legal department sees with placing commitments of this nature on a resell.
Any further questions or comments from the council?
I have one more question. Now that there's been more planning that's been done, and the diagram that Mr. Nelson is showing us, do you foresee that there's still modifications being made to the layout of the property? And are there some things that may still change? Are you firing up a launch here then?
During our process, we have not had a primary class submitted to us. That's the first thing that we will review at a technical level. We'll look at stormwater, we'll look at the roads at that time, we'll look at connectivity, we'll look at traffic, other infrastructure utilities, expense. At this time, it's not been submitted to us. So yes, there could be changes. If a pond isn't at the right capacity and they need a larger pond, that might shift a house or two, that might shift a road. Furthermore, again, this is not a zoning change necessarily for this specific development and this pattern and this layout. If Apollo, and I hope they do a great job, I hope they do well, but let's say that they went out of business tomorrow and a different developer were to purchase this land, it could look much different. The townhomes might not be there, they could be in a different spot. Anything could change at this point, so I wouldn't feel comfortable saying that this is going to be exactly what we're going to see at the end of this process.
I got a question.
Yes.
So, say for example, you're saying for the, for the streets, as far as the connectivity, there has to be an extra exit somewhere connected to at least one of the neighborhoods? Or does it have to connect to all of the neighborhoods? Does it have to connect to Leah and Love, or could it just connect to one of the ones that has sidewalks?
It would need to connect to all the existing dead ends. The new streets will have sidewalks, and a lot of the subdivisions surrounding it were all not agreed, but under the county annex at a later time. Some of them do not include sidewalks, but they would have quick access to sidewalks with the new connections.
Any other questions, comments?
I'm sorry, another question. If something does happen, that Apollo doesn't move forward with this, what are our options of changing that back to add? And having some say about what does go in there if it's not Apollo?
So council can direct a zoning change on someone else's property is not something I would necessarily encourage to do to control development. We're supposed to play reasonable regard to our comprehensive plan, which has designated this as single family. I think everyone on council, and in the public housing agreement, that single family should be what develops here. I don't think that there's anything in our comprehensive plan that would indicate to anyone at council that it would be appropriate to resell a single-family development to an agricultural development. There's, when we're paying reasonable regard to the comprehensive plan, there's nothing that would indicate that that, the best, most desirable use of that land is agriculture. But council can enact a zoning change. They have asked staff to prepare zoning changes in the past, or Plank Commission has. But I would not recommend rezoning it to agriculture.
May I just ask a question?
Yes.
In that same vein, so if, you know, the council moves forward, does not change the amendments, or the we don't change it, we don't change what was passed. And Apollo doesn't get the Plank Commission to issue the waivers, so they can no longer develop.
Right.
What the walkers do, they'll want it back to, they'll want it back to agriculture until they consult that with Sue. Right? So they may run before the body to ask for that agricultural.
So as long as they don't halt agricultural practices, they can continue to farm as agricultural land for as long as they desire to. The zoning does not impact the current use. If they were to develop a subdivision and then tear that subdivision down and try to go back to A, we could say, no, it is not something for that. But if, as long as they continue to do the use for, and they don't pause for maybe six months or change uses, they'll always be able to farm that land.
Any other questions or comments on the council?
I got questions, comments. Trying to think about Dairy Queen, the no left turn westbound on a main street. Didn't we do that as the council? Wasn't that ours?
Yes, we did.
So it's not, it is within our prerogative to do that, you just don't think it's our prerogative to do it here during this step? Start there.
So the Dairy Queen at the main street, I was at it for my time at Greenwood. I don't know if that was passed via four min strip strict left turns, or if it was just infrastructure, we said five three strict left turns. Those are two different things.
I thought it was us.
It would be within the
Did the state put the divider in because it was comprised of somebody to thirty-four?
I think we did it, and it was because that we were having some accidents there that have people to dairy queen and trying to get into dairy.
Mr. Hopper, it would be within the council's prerogative in the future to request a restriction on ordinance at that type once that road is in trouble.
I think, as I recall, our concern when this commitment was made about the right in, right out only was due to its concerns that Mr. St. John had about its proximity to the roundabout and
The site distance on the hill.
Yeah, and we wanted, in site distance, so we wanted to, but I think a full access entry would be better.
But if you
Yeah.
If you go out there, though, and you look to the west.
Yeah, so I've heard city staff's recommendations. I'm not opposed to removing number two and number three. I just think number one is bad policy. We're telling them that we want to put more cars on the road when we have failed them since at least nineteen ninety-one. In the case of Villa Heights, it sounded like when they were annexed into the city, but any city infrastructure in there, city sidewalks, probably don't have stormwater out there. I know Hendricks and Green Valley don't have stormwater. I would assume they were annexed probably in the city around the same time, so that's on us. Just weighing one bad policy against the other, I think the bad policy of having those streets connect is I would vote, and everyone encouraged to vote in favor of the one that I have, if we vote on demand eventually to remove two and three, so.
Well, I would respond to that. If you think it's bad policy, a huge change of ordinance. If you look at, do they text them into the subdivision control requirements?
There's no leeway for us to do this on the UDO, then yeah, I think we should, absolutely.
Right. Any further comments or questions?
I guess I'd be voting on demand eventually.
Yes, we will.
I, I don't know why, but I have the oath that I took, the oath of office. And it says that I'm supposed to uphold the laws of the state of Indiana and the UDO's ordinance, and I feel like I have to support the UDO. Because I took the oath of office to be a city council member, and supposed to uphold the law whether I like it or not.
And that's where I stand with you.
Any other comments or questions?
Isn't it also incumbent on this body to look at ordinance that this body passes and do the things that are best for the residents of this city? We're looking at three neighborhoods here that don't have Please don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I think that it is the best of what can actually, if I had my way, that would be farmland, it would have been farmland fifty years ago when I was born here, and fifty years from now it would still be farmland. That's not feasible. So we want, as a body, to encourage good development, like Apollo. But we need to, we need to also, as a body, move forward in our ordinance and legality and protect the citizens. We don't have, I live on a street with no sidewalks. I have a Hawkeye on my own child at all times. It's a dead-end street. We can go through the city and drive through time and time again where our UDO was not followed and was waived, probably for the, probably for the good of the community. And I, I think that we, we made this commitment to these neighborhoods that we were not going to connect this. And I think that it would be a disservice to them, our, the folks that put us up here that trust in our decisions, to, to not go back on that work. And I think Yeah, I don't misunderstand, because I also think that the decision to not do that limits their ability to avoid the major roads themselves, to get all the way to Fry Road without touching a major road in the city. But this, to me, safety has got to be the priority here.
Any other comments or questions on the council?
And I will say that I would drop my objection over once, since we put in sidewalks.
There is an area that you're all acquainted with. If you're on Madison Avenue and you want to get, you want to, and you're going northbound, and you want to avoid the county line in Madison area, you can turn right onto Camby, you can do a right at the T onto Beach Park, then you do a left onto Fairview South Drive, and that takes you out onto Carney. That's a neighborhood south of me. They don't have any sidewalks, and the amount of traffic that they have going through there is unbelievable.
I hope not.
To me, that just brings the point, sometimes it's better to do the right thing than to be right. And if we aren't right by not approving this, or not approving a change to this, then we have the ability to make it right by changing UDO or making a amendment to the UDO. So I feel like that's
Yeah, sometimes in some cases, there's a need for an exception. Yeah, and I'm, I'm for compromise. I'm pro-development, definitely, but, you know, I also think we keep in consideration our constituents.
Any other comments, questions?
My comment would be the exception for the body responsible for the exception is the advisory Plank Commission. It is not the county council. This is an overreach of the county council.
Okay, what if we were to table this tonight, and the Plank Commission look at the UDO and what modifications might need to be made to that segment?
So it is about a sixty-day process from the mill for this to go before advisory Plank Commission. Would that those come, a lot of investment, money, engineering plans? I think that would be a question that we would need to ask the developer, if he's comfortable going through that, to get to the point where it gets to Plank Commission. Without having that done, we could under miscellaneous business and formally ask them about it, but that would not be a, a necessarily a vote.
Well, I'm sympathetic with the residents, but at the same time, I, I don't, I find it difficult to go against the directions that we already have.
Any other comments or questions?
My concern is about the safety of the neighborhood and the connection way down when Mark said that he would allow right and left turns on the Smith Valley Road because I thought, without a left-hand turn on the Smith Valley Road, people who want to turn left on the Smith Valley Road will just go through the old neighborhood and then come out to Smith Valley and take their left. But my concern is about safety and the lack of sidewalks way down. Mark said that the access point would be full access.
All right, anything else?
I want to ask a question today. Are you talking about, because there is currently a road that will come out of the new development on the Smith Valley? Are you talking about a connector road that goes through, say, Green Valley and comes out there on whatever? You talked about that, because as it stands now, they're not coming out of Green Valley. They're coming out of the new road and out of the subdivision. There was a house that was on the center of that cul-de-sac that they originally moved out of there, and that was going to be a connection to it right there at the bottom of that street. So I think we're talking about different things. So there's no traffic currently that will come through Green Valley that the right-only, it doesn't concern me at that point, other than the proximity to the roundabout. But I think that you're saying full-access roadway wouldn't meet, they wouldn't be cut through there anyway, right? Without this, is what I'm saying. Because you're talking about roads right there through the
Yeah, the new road.
Right.
It's going to be full access.
That's full access, and so they wouldn't be cutting through Green Valley anyway. They're going through the
If we get rid of these three commitments, the new road would be full access.
The new road out of Green Valley, the other neighborhood.
How would the Walker development will be full access?
Right.
Dave, are there sidewalks or trails along that roadway? No, this new diagram that you have of the traffic flow.
All of this new roads would have sidewalks. We also have, in our current commitments, that they're going to try and work with the schools, and how the schools, trying to get safe routes to schools where kids are on a sidewalk from these neighborhoods to get there if they do choose to walk. To a couple of our council members' points, there are quite a few much more direct north-south roads. I do not envision Green Valley, Leah Lane, Main Street being the predominant choice for traffic to go through, especially if that is a full access on the Smith Valley. It's just not a convenient path for people. They're not designed in a way that is convenient for people to cut through. There are more direct routes.
You're a liar.
Hey, hey. Any audience, that's enough.
You can see this with our new streets. You can see this in the proposed, or the required road for the northern parcel. There are going to be more direct routes than taking hard turns into existing subdivision streets.
All right, any further questions from the council or comments? Right, hearing none, then we will take these in order one, two, and three. I will entertain a motion to remove the commitment of no vehicular connection to Faith, Green Valley, or Lea Lane. The motion by Mr. Lexi, do I have a second? Second, I'm Ms. Gibson. Any discussion, further discussion on the motion to remove the commitment of no vehicular traffic to Faith, Green Valley, or Lea Lane? Hearing none, then roll call on that motion.
Mom?
Nay.
Bethany?
Nay.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Bill?
Nay.
Hopper?
Nay.
Lexi?
Aye.
And Manchin?
Nay.
Motion fails with a vote of three to five, or three to five. All right, accept the motion to remove the adding of a four-way stop at Covered Bridge and Timber Trail. Some of, motion, Mr. Hopper, second. Sorry, second, Mr. Lexi, any discussion? Roll call on the motion to remove the four-way stop at Covered Bridge and Timber Trail.
I send this. Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Bill?
Nay.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manchin?
Aye.
Mom?
Motion to remove the requirement for a four-way stop is approved with a vote of five to three. Accept the motion on the, to limit, or to remove the commitment to limit the exit on the Smith Valley to a right-in, right-out only. Motion, Mr. Hopper, second.
Sir.
Second, Mr. Lexi, any discussion? Roll call on that motion.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manchin?
Aye.
Mom?
Aye.
And Bethany?
Aye.
Motion to remove the requirement to put a four-way, or a in-only, right-in, right-out only at Smith Valley is passed with a vote of eight to zero. All right, that ends that conversation.
Who knew it would just come back a month later?
Any other miscellaneous business from the council? Anything from the corporation council? Anything from the controller? Anything from the mayor?